I'm sorry that we're late getting in here. Everyone please rise for the flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advanced notice of and to attend the meeting of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the Cedar Grove Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be advertised by having the date, time, and place thereof, posted on bulletin boards in the district, published and/or transmitted to the Verona Cedar Grove Times and Star Ledger newspapers, filed with the township clerk, and posted on the district's website. The meeting is open to the public for comment for items that are on the agenda. Hearing none. Good evening, Board.
Hi.
How's everybody?
We just needed a roll call.
Oh, I'm sorry. May I have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Dye?
Yes.
Mrs. Marinelli?
Here.
Mr. Mandela?
Here.
And Mr. Sicala.
Yes. Good evening, again. Does anybody have any committee reports this evening? No meetings?
School's out.
I have two. So, there you go. Well, I went to the last South End FSA meeting, and they were wrapping up the end-of-the-year stuff and awarding gifts to all the 4th grade parents that are rising and just getting ready to end the year on a high note. They had great fundraising this year, and they're very excited for next year. Basically, the whole meeting was to say goodbye to those parents who were leaving. And the second thing is that I attended-
Are there new officers there next year, or are they the same?
No, the same officers, because it's a two-year term. So Rita Yager and her team will stay on for next year as well.
Great.
The second report I have is I attended the New Jersey Education School Law Forum in Monroe a couple of weeks back, and I did that also last year. And we had different workshops learning about or discussing the new changes in the law since the last year, the last time I attended. And we're going to actually talk about one of those very important things tonight when we talk about the doctrine of necessity and this new ethics opinion that came out. But it was very informative. There are a lot of good things that I'll be able to share with the Board as we move on and we, you know, hit issues that are affected by some of these new changes. So it was a real good opportunity to get some of that information and so we know, you know, if we ever get hit with a situation where one of these new laws come into effect, at least have a little bit of background. And our Board Attorney, Mr. Scorillo, and Mr. Griggs were both there, and they were an instrumental part of putting the program together. So we have, you know, we're lucky to have good counsel who are really on top of this stuff.
Absolutely.
So those are the committee reports. We have a board presentation this evening. The Cedar Grove Girls and Boys Lacrosse is here, and we'd like to welcome who's going to be speaking for the... Come on up.
I love my sweatshirt. I love it.
I know.
Hello?
Hello.
All right. Good evening, Board members. To start off, I'm Joe DeBarry. I'm going to be a senior this year. I was the captain of the Cedar Grove Lacrosse Boys Team. We had a great season. We had a great time doing everything, and I'm here to read a statement on behalf of everybody, both teams. "The Cedar Grove High School Boys and Girls Lacrosse Team Players and Parents, along with the Cedar Grove Lacrosse Club, want to express our appreciation to you for recognizing the need and supporting the effort for the sport of lacrosse to be included in our high school athletics program. For some of us, lacrosse is a sport we love and have played for a number of years and dreamed of playing in high school. For others, like myself, as a... I never played growing up, so this is my first time, so it was a chance and an opportunity to learn. You gave us these opportunities. For 44 of us this year representing our high school in its very first season was exciting, and the enthusiasm and support from the community was highly motivating, and we hope you are as proud of us as we are this first season. We know that many people worked very hard toward making this happen, including the parents, the coaches, and the kids. We understand that the addition of a new sport requires much planning and coordination in addition to resources. We are sincerely grateful for what you have done for us. We believe that your continued support of the lacrosse program will contribute in its long growth and even greater success as we move forward. Please accept these gifts as a gesture of appreciation for your efforts in bringing lacrosse to Cedar Grove High School."
Yeah, go ahead. Open it up.
By the way, we like your gifts. That sweatshirt is unbelievable. I wear that sweatshirt all the time. That is great. That is great.
That is awesome. That is awesome.
Good deal.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, and we're very glad that you had such a great season, and we're looking forward to lacrosse really continuing to grow. And Coach Pacino, thank you for all your hard work, and good luck moving forward.
It would originally just be a picture of me, but...
That would have been nice, too.
Yeah. Okay. We're going to move on to the board business, but we'll take a couple of minutes. You guys are all welcome to stay. If you want to hear all the fun stuff we have in store for us, please do. But we're going to just take a couple of minutes to, for those who want to leave, give them an opportunity to go. So we'll take a three-minute break. Thank you. Okay, we'll reconvene. We have a lot of board business on the agenda, so let's get to it. Under minutes, may I have a motion for B1 through B3? B1 is a motion to approve the public and executive minutes of June 9, 2015. B2 is a motion to approve the Treasuries Report for the month of May 2015. And B3 is a motion to approve the Board Secretary's certification to the Board that no line item account has encumbrances or expenditures which exceed the appropriation in violation of the Administrative Code as set forth in that item. May I have a motion for those items, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Dye?
Yes.
Mr. Mandela?
Aye.
Mrs. Marinelli?
Aye.
And Mr. Sicala.
Yes. Under bills, may I have a motion for B4, which is a motion to pay the bills for the June 30, 2015 that was in our packet. May I have a motion for that item, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Dye?
Yes.
Mr. Mandela?
Aye.
Mrs. Marinelli?
Aye.
And Mr. Sicala.
Yes. Under bills, may I have a motion for B4, which is a motion to pay the bills for the June 30, 2015 that was in our packet. May I have a motion for that item, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Dye?
Yes.
Mr. Mandela?
Aye.
Mrs. Marinelli?
Aye.
And Mr. Sicala.
Yes. May I have a motion for, under business, B5 through B11? B5 is a motion to approve the parental transportation contract for the student number listed in that item. B6 is a motion to approve the parental transportation contract for the student listed in that item under a student number. B7 is a motion to approve the parental transportation contract for the student under that student number listed in that item. B8 is a motion to approve the parental transportation contract for the student bearing that student number in that item. B9 is a motion to approve the parental transportation contract for the student number as listed therein. B10 is a motion to retroactively approve Momster's DBA Sharp Entertainment to use a Cedar Grove High School athletic field to film a video on June 8, 2015 as set forth in that item. And B11 is a motion to approve Strong &amp; Associates to provide the keynote address and full-day in-district training on educator evaluation for teachers and administrators on September 1, 2015 for the payment of $3,000. May I have a motion for those items, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Dye?
Yes.
Mr. Mandela?
Aye.
Mrs. Marinelli?
Aye.
And Mr. Sicala.
Yes. May I have a motion for items B12 through B17? B12 is a resolution which permits the Board of Education to establish and/or deposit into certain reserve accounts certain monies, and this resolution specifically deals with the transfer of unanticipated excess current revenue or unexpected appropriations into reserve accounts during the month of June by this resolution, and these funds would go into a capital reserve account. B13 is a similar resolution regarding similar funds which would be put into the maintenance reserve account. B14 is a motion to accept the gracious donation of an extensive collection of John F. Kennedy texts, scrapbooks, and photos from the Locasio family of Cedar Grove to MMS. The donation will be used to enhance instruction by highlighting significant events in history. B15 is a motion to accept the gracious donation of $2,000 from the Cedar Grove High School class of 2015, which will be used for the refurbishment of student lockers at the high school. B16 is a motion to approve SSP Video LLC to film and upload 12 Cedar Grove High School football games to huddle during the 2015 football season. And B17 is a motion to approve the tax requisition schedule for the 2015-2016 school year as set forth in that item. May I have a motion for those items, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Dye?
Yes.
Mrs. Marinelli?
Aye.
Mr. Mandela?
Aye.
And Mr. Sicala.
Yes. May I have a motion for B18 through B33? B18 is a motion to approve the annual use facility agreement with the Montclair YMCA as set forth therein. B19 is a motion to approve the annual service agreement for the 2015-2016 school year with Genesis Educational Services as set forth in that item. B20 is a motion to approve Scorillo, Cornell, Merlino, McKeever, and Osborne as the Cedar Grove Board of Education General Counsel as set forth therein. B21 is a motion to appoint the firm of Rogan-McCarthy as Cedar Grove Board of Education Bond Counsel for the 2015-2016 school year. B22 is a motion to appoint Robert Donahue as the Cedar Grove School District's Architect of Record for the remainder of the 2015-2016 school year at the fee set forth therein. B23 is a motion to approve the audit firm Lurch-Vinci-Vincie &amp; Higgins, LLP, to perform the Cedar Grove Board of Education June 30, 2016 Annual Fiscal Audit as set forth in that item. B24 is a motion to designate Brown &amp; Brown Advisors as the Health Benefits Insurance Agent for the District commencing July 1, 2015 through June 30, 2016 as set forth in that item. B25 is a motion to rescind motion B8 from May 12, 2015 Agenda, and the specifics are set forth in that item. B26 is a motion to approve the 2015-2016 Group 1 and Group 2 Delta Dental Tier Rates as set forth therein. B27 is a motion to approve Lincoln Landscaping to provide baseball infield setup services for the spring 2016 baseball season as set forth in that item. B28 is a motion to approve the Pomptonian Food Service Agreement for the 2015-2016 school year as set forth therein. B29 is a motion to approve the District's nonparticipation in the New Jersey Department of Agriculture's National School Lunch Program for the 2015-2016 school year. B30 is a resolution, be it resolved, that in accordance with the code, the Board of Education of Cedar Grove does not require the Gammont Schools to charge students for reduced and/or paid meals for the 2015-2016 school year. B31 is a motion to approve the Tax Shelter Annuity Companies to open enrollment for any Board employee for the 2014-2016 school year as set forth therein. B32 is a motion to approve the 2015-2016 Annual Contract with Northwest Evaluation Association in the amount of $20,250 as set forth therein. And B33 is a motion to approve the Annual Contract with AM Consultants in the amount not to exceed $950 as set forth in that item. That was a lot. May I have a motion for those items, please?
So moved.
Yeah. Just a minute's action. Sorry.
Any discussion?
I just have one item with regards to B28 with Pomptonian. Can we put together a list of things that we don't want them to offer at the middle school and the high school? So that it's clear, so we're not running into it. I felt like this year we ran into lots of things being served that none of us wanted being served. If you have a list, I think.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Dye?
Yes.
Mrs. Marinelli?
Aye.
Mr. Mandela?
Aye.
And Mr. Sicala.
Yes. May I have a motion for B34 through B40? B34 is a motion to approve the receipt in the amount of $3,400 from the Cedar Grove Garden Center for the establishment of the Cedar Grove Garden Center Scholarship as set forth therein. B35 is a motion to adopt the uniform minimum chart of accounts as set forth in that item. B36 is a motion to approve Teresa Lombardi, Confidential Secretary to the Superintendent, to record minutes of the Board meetings in the absence of the Board Secretary. B37 is a motion to appoint Mr. Christopher Kinney as the District Liaison to the New Jersey Division of Youth and Family Service for the 2015-2016 school year. B38 is a motion to approve the curriculum and textbooks for the 2015-2016 school year that are currently in use. B39 is a motion to authorize the Business Administrator Board Secretary to release warrants for payment of the District's bills as needed in between scheduled Board meetings and to have those claims ratified at the next regular Board meeting. And B40 is a motion to authorize certified school personnel to collect and maintain the following information for pupil records, and that information is set forth in that item. May I have a motion for those items, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? I just have one point on B37. We should just make sure we change that to comply with the new name of DIFIS. DIFIS does not exist anymore. It's a division of children and DCP&amp;P. Children, parents, and placement are exactly the same. So we have to make sure we... Maybe we should amend that to DCP&amp;P now and change it as we move forward.
We should do that.
Okay. May I have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Dye?
Yes.
Mrs. Marinelli?
Aye.
Mr. Mandela?
Aye.
And Mr. Sicala.
Yes. May I have a motion for, I guess we'll just do B41 and B42. These are two resolutions regarding the Cedar Grove Custodial Association. B41 says, "Whereas the Board of Education of the Borough of Cedar Grove and the Cedar Grove Custodial Association are parties to collective negotiation agreements that is effective for the period beginning July 1, 2012 and ending June 30, 2015. And whereas the Board recognizes the Association as a sole bargaining representative for the custodial staff members employed by the Board, and whereas Article 5 of the agreement provides that the formal workday for evening district custodians shall be one of two shifts, 3:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m. or 11:00 p.m. to 7:00 a.m., and whereas a custodian who wishes to start her shift earlier has requested to start 15 minutes earlier at the beginning of the formal workday, and whereas said custodian has agreed to begin her workday 15 minutes earlier than her required start time, whereas the Board wishes to accommodate said custodian on a case-by-case basis depending upon the needs of the school district, and therefore with regard to the foregoing promises and mutual promises and covenants contained therein, the parties agree to items 1 through 4 regarding that employee. B42 is a similar resolution, and it deals with a formal workday for district custodians during the day, 6:30 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. and 7:00 a.m. to 3:30 p.m., and there is a custodian who wishes to start his shift later and has requested to start one and a half hours later at 8:00 a.m. on various days during the week, and whereas a custodian has agreed to begin his workday one and a half later than the required start time, and the Board wishes to accommodate said custodian on a case-by-case basis, and therefore there's mutual promises as set forth in items 5 through 8 in that item. May I have a motion for those two items, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Dye?
Yes.
Mr. Mandela?
Aye.
Mrs. Marinelli?
Aye.
And Mr. Sicala.
Yes. May I have a motion for B43 through B46? B43 is a motion to approve the vending agreement between the Cedar Grove Board of Education and Essex Valley School in Fairfield, which will become a satellite food service area of the Cedar Grove Board of Education for the period as set forth in that item. B44 is a motion to approve Four Pillars Group LLC to use MMS Media Center on Wednesday evenings for 12 weeks from July 8 to September 23, 2015 as set forth in that item. B45 is a motion to acknowledge generous donation of $24,670 from the South End FSA for the purchase of two Chromebook carts. And B46 is a motion to approve the acceptance of the grant funds and submission of the Fiscal Year 2015 No Child Left Behind Grant in the amount of $128,506 as set forth in that item. May I have a motion for those items, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Dye?
Yes.
Mr. Mandela?
Aye.
Mrs. Marinelli?
Aye.
And Mr. Sicala.
Yes. May I have a motion for B47? B47 is a resolution regarding the doctrine of necessity and the new School Ethics Act opinion, advisory opinion that just came out, and I'll read the resolution and then we'll have some board discussion on it. So B47 reads, "Whereas the School Ethics Act, New Jersey statute annotated 18A:12-21@SEC, was enacted by the New Jersey State Legislature to ensure and preserve the public confidence in school board members and school administrators and to provide specific ethical standards to guide their conduct. And whereas the School Ethics Commission has provided guidance and public advisory opinion A03-98 regarding how a Board should invoke the doctrine of necessity when a quorum of the Board of Education has conflicts of interest on a matter required to be voted upon. And whereas the opinion set forth that when it is necessary for the Board to invoke the doctrine of necessity, the Board should state publicly that it is doing so, the reason that such action is necessary, and the specific nature of the conflicts of interest. Whereas, in keeping with the legislative purpose as set forth in NJSA 18A:12-22A, the School Ethics Commission views public disclosure of conflicts of interest to be paramount when it is necessary to invoke the doctrine of necessity. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Cedar Grove School District Board of Education hereby invokes the doctrine of necessity to avoid an ethics violation with respect to voting on the collective bargaining agreement that has been reached between the Cedar Grove Board of Education and the teachers, secretaries, and paraprofessionals, and that it must do so because of conflict of interest for Board members, Mrs. Burke, Mrs. Marinelli, and Mrs. Dye, for having family members, a member or members affiliated with the New Jersey Educational Association and/or is a member themselves of NJEA. Be it further resolved that the Cedar Grove School District Board of Education, herewith meeting the requirement to read the resolution at a regularly scheduled public meeting, will post it where it posts public notices for 30 days, and will provide the School Ethics Commission with a copy of the resolution as required by the decision of the School Ethics Commission." So, Mr. Mandela, would you like to just open up discussion on the doctrine of necessity, what it is, why we're doing this?
Yeah, I just wanted to come and thanks, Mr. Sicala. I just want the community to be aware that, again, tonight, the Board was prepared to vote on a ratification of the teachers' contract and the secretaries and paraprofessionals, but because of this new doctrine that came down, it was clarified by our Board Attorneys of what steps were necessary to be taken, and one of those was the 30-day public notice and also to give the information to the Commissioner. So we... It's just a technicality that we weren't able to vote tonight to approve or to ratify the agreement that's been made, but I just wanted to just publicly say that everything else is on track behind the scenes. Everything is moving forward with all of our agreements. We're happy to say that we are in full contact starting the school year for the 2015-2016 school year, and the Board has already made our next meeting to vote on the... to ratify the contract. We're going to have a special meeting in August once the 30 days are up, so that way everything will be done in the proper procedure. So I just wanted to make that clear, because I didn't want there to be any question of why we weren't ratifying, because I know that it was originally on the agenda and we just had to take it off the agenda. So I just wanted it to be clear to the community that everything is moving forward, and it was just because of this new doctrine that we had to wait 30 days.
And essentially, in plain language, because three of our Board members cannot vote on the contract because of the most recent ethics opinion, then it only leaves Mr. Mandela and myself to vote, and that doesn't consist of... We don't consist of a quorum, just the two of us. So in order to vote on something where you can't have a quorum, you need to adopt this resolution, which we just... which we will do in a minute, which we just read, and we're going to adopt momentarily, and then wait 30 days.
Correct. Yep. That's exactly what's happening. So it was new to all of us. This is the first time we've ever came across this, and this was added on. This was never in the past when we negotiated in the past with agreements. So this is all brand-new. So it was a learning experience for all of us that 30 days had to be in play, so...
Well, and just to add, the last contract, I wasn't able to vote on it because I'm the member of the NJEA, but the new ethics code says if you have family members.
Right.
So that's what increased the numbers.
That excludes me, though.
Right, to invoke the doctrine.
Yep. So thank you.
Thank you.
So I am excited that we are... we do have a contract.
Okay, may I have a roll call, please?
Did we move on it?
Yes.
Okay. Mrs. Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Dye?
Yes.
Mr. Mandela?
Aye.
Mrs. Marinelli?
Aye.
And Mr. Sicala.
Yes. Mr. Featherman, would you mind talking for a little while? I think it's your time for the superintendent's report.
I'd be happy to give your vocal cords a rest, Mr. Sicala. Good evening, everyone. I think at this time, before I even mention the superintendent's report, it's important to reflect on the end of the school year, and, you know, there's so much that goes into the school year, but I think it's important to just mention that we're... Some good folks are moving on through retirement, and we've acknowledged them over the past couple few Board meetings. And even since then, we've had some resignations for good folks that are moving on, being promoted, and one of them's in the room. Mr. Zoppi will be moving on as well. I mention him only because he's here. So we are, you know, losing some good folks, but isn't that what we do as a local education agency, right? We look to promote not just our kids, but our professionals, our teachers, our paras, our secretaries, and hope that they're learning from the community that we have here, and we see that happening. And while we hate to see good folks leave, we certainly know that, you know, we've worked side by side and helped develop them perhaps, and we're proud of them. And so we know they'll go on. It's bigger and better things, and, you know, with expanding families and responsibilities, we're very happy for them. So the folks that are retiring and/or moving on, congratulations, best wishes, have a great summer. So getting to the superintendent's report, it, as always, is extensive. It's exhaustive practically. So the folks that are retiring and/or moving on, congratulations, best wishes, have a great summer. So getting to the superintendent's report, it, as always, is extensive. It's exhaustive practically, and I'd like to thank all of our teachers who contribute to the report, and certainly our administrative team that helped me assemble this report. And again, it's a narrative of what's going on from one month to the next in our... On our school district. So take a look at it, read through it. It's posted online shortly after our meetings, and it is a nice... It's a narrative of what the hard work is that we're doing, and hopefully, you know, developing our youngsters into... To find young men and women. Having said that, the graduation, the promotion ceremonies were, you know, flawless. I mean, it's just the proudest moment for a superintendent, for a teacher, you know, to shake those students' hands as they're rising or graduating onto college career military. It's just the year ended on a real high note, and so congratulations to all of you moving on to a new platform in life. And so the report reflects some of those achievements as well. More specifically, you know, there are lots of things going on, one of which is the facilities upgrades. Yes, the referendum passed. Yes, lots of things are going on to get ready for a March of 2016 attack of this referendum. And this report outlines some of the pre-construction meetings that have been held and that will continue to be held in the early phases of these projects. So we're meeting with different stakeholders. We're inviting them in to meet with engineers, the architect, our administrative team from every building, to talk about everything from swatch colors to, you know, decals, to what our bathroom's going to look like and how heating pipes will be removed, what our new concession stand kitchen will look like. Special thank you to Mrs. Rahm from the Black and Gold, who spent a lot of time with us talking about the needs of the new kitchen. And how exciting is that? You get to develop, you know, these projects from the ground up. So we're real excited about what's happening. And having said that, we've already run into, you know, some concerns about how this affects our kids and our learning community, and, you know, we thank you in advance for your patience, because, you know, when you redo a bathroom at home, you know, many of us have lived through that inconvenience. Imagine doing 43 bathrooms and ripping up an entire athletic complex and auditorium, and on and on the list goes. There will be inconveniences, and, you know, programs will be impacted, so, you know, we will be out in front with you, the public, inviting you to meetings, asking for your input, asking for your patience. We'll be working with local agencies, the police in particular, you know, for areas of relief, be it parking for our seniors or what have you. So the process has begun, and, you know, we thank you in advance for joining us and your patience, and we're excited. We couldn't be more excited about the future regarding facilities. Now, perhaps, not perhaps, but certainly more importantly, is what's happening with our curricula. CUSAC came back on June 12th. I met with the interim Essex County Superintendent and Mr. Zara, and the educational specialist, Mr. Joseph DiVincenzo, and the three of us reviewed progress that we've made, significant progress that we've made towards our district improvement plan, as well as our long-term plan. As we've been reporting to you at each meeting, the K-5 English Language Arts curriculum, they've all been rewritten. They're all in place. They've all been activated. We've had professional development along the way. Our teachers, our K-5 teachers are in a good place now, come September. You know, when you marry that with our new literacy series and the Daily Five and Cafe, to really make substantive changes in the way our students learn and our teachers teach. So we couldn't be more excited about that. And as you've also heard me report back, Mrs. Mishah has worked tirelessly to transition us to a new math series, Go Math, we've selected, and professional development has already begun in that area. So our teams of teachers in K through 5 have already been to a professional development training regimen, and we're looking forward to continuing that this summer. We've got some great things going on. We've got Performance Matters has been launched. We had our pre-planning meeting with them just last week with our administrative team. And so you really see, for lack of a better word, a vision coming together, you know, due to the Board's efforts and the administrative team, and most especially the teachers in the community. So it's taken us some time to flesh out the things that we want to improve on, but I really think, and I want to say this to you all, that we're getting there, and so thank you for your contributions. It's really been an interesting couple of years for us. So take these, you know, superintendent's reports home with you, or log on and re-threw them, because they're really filled with exciting things, you know, from winning state championships to recognizing our student athletes with first, second, third team, all SCC status, and on and on, and from the music accomplishments and, you know, math leagues, and, you know, Mr. Sicala's son is, you know, winning math competitions, and Mrs. Marinelli's daughter is being recognized, you know, for all SCC, you know, accomplishments, and the list goes on and on for what, you know, this Board is working hard to accomplish. So check out the reports. I hope you enjoy them, and, you know, have a great summer. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Featherman.
I do have one question.
Yes.
So, math at the middle school, can you take us through what the changes are with regards to the scheduling? Because I know as schedules come out this summer, I can't remember.
Well, I'd be lying if I said I had a crystal-clear answer to that. Let's see. So what we've... What we focused on is K-5, and so we've managed to better align the math-plus instructors with grade-level math instruction. So whereas this year and the year before, we had math-plus teachers teaching, for instance, 7th grade, and then teaching a regular math to grade 6, and we found that that wasn't the best system. You know, we have team planning, and when you have a 7th grade teacher teaching math at the same time teaching a 6th grade math plus, it's virtually impossible for them to team-plan with both grade levels. So what we thought we would do is include the 5th grade in the new K-5 math series and expand the block of math for 5th graders to be a double block. And, you know, certainly, you know, we've already been down the road with CUSAC and our school reports and what our needs are regarding language arts and mathematics with respect to student achievement. So we certainly think that, you know, expanding 5th grade math into a double block, in addition to aligning teachers with grade-specific teams, can only help student outcomes.
Thank you.
Are there any plans to do that? I know not next year, but in the future with the 6th and 8th grade to double-block math?
I don't know. I think we'll see how it goes in 5th grade. Again, the series we purchased is a K-5 program, so I suppose we'd have to look at the 6th, 7th, and 8th series and how, you know, the realignment of staff is working to promote the changes we're looking for. We're certainly going to monitor how this is working and whether or not it's something we need to implement, 6 through 8.
And then another change is also with Spanish, right? Spanish is going to become a cycle.
Right. You know, there's always a casualty, you know, an unintended consequence to when you expand into a double-block of math, for instance. I mean, the master schedule hasn't changed. There's only so many minutes in a day, and so when you implement a double-block like that, something has to give. So it does impact the 5th grade Spanish program where, instead of a more traditional Spanish program, it's become part of our cycle program. Now, we're aware of how that impacts Spanish in our language instruction, but we were cognizant of maintaining it in grade 6, 7, and 8, and we still think we can develop, as you've heard, our Spanish program at the high school, even given the fact that 5th grade Spanish has now become a cycle. So we think it's going to work. We're certainly going to monitor how it's going, but clearly, language arts and math is our focus.
Thank you. Welcome. Okay, moving on the agenda, may I have a motion under personnel for S-1 through S-13? S-1 is a motion to approve the superintendent's report. S-2 is a motion to affirm the superintendent's report on harassment, intimidation, and bullying from June 9th, 2015. S-3 is a motion to approve Ashley Amato, South End School Resource Teacher, as set forth therein. S-4 is a motion to approve Kristin Arluna, South End School Grade 1 Teacher, as set forth in that item. S-5 is a motion to approve the resignation of Rob Zoppi, as set forth therein. S-6 is a motion to approve the resignation of Kaylee Rothenberg, Occupational Therapist, North End School, effective June 30th, 2015. S-7 is a motion to approve the resignation of Christine Internacola, High School Student Assistant Counselor, effective June 30th, 2015. S-8 is a motion to rescind Jennifer Monto, South End School Special Ed Teacher, as set forth in that item. S-9 is a motion to approve Jennifer Monto, South End School Special Education Teacher, as set forth in that item. S-10 is a motion to reemploy and set salaries for the non-bargaining group, as set forth therein that item. S-12 is a motion to approve the staff instructors for the Cedar Grove 2015 Middle School Summer Program, as set forth therein. S-13 is a motion to approve the list of student volunteers for the school summer music program, as set forth therein. May I have a motion for those items, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Did I miss item S-11? Did I read this? Okay, let me also read an item. I think I missed it. S-11 is a motion to approve the paraprofessionals, as set forth in that item. I have a motion for those items, please.
So moved.
I did that.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Dye?
Yes.
Mr. Mandela?
Aye.
Mrs. Marinelli?
Aye.
And Mr. Sicala.
Yes. May I have a motion for S-14 through S-23? S-14 is a motion to approve the refund of $180 to the parents of student number 401-814 for nonparticipation in the summer music program. S-15 is a motion to rescind motion item S-20 from the June 9th, 2015 Board of Education Agenda. S-16 is a motion to retroactively approve the summer custodial rate of pay at $8.38 an hour. S-17 is a motion to revise the motions, as set forth in that item. S-18 is a motion to retroactively approve the adaptation of the New Jersey Department of Education District Mentoring Plan, as set forth in that item. S-19 is a motion to authorize attendance at the events, as set forth therein. S-20 is a motion to reimburse the school-based volunteer, as set forth in that item. S-21 is a motion to approve the school-based volunteer for Cedar Grove High School Drama and Musical Productions, as set forth therein. S-22 is a motion to approve the revised calendar for the 2015-2016 school year, and S-23 is a motion to approve the following retroactive leave of absence, as set forth in that item. May I have a motion for those items, please?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion?
I just have a question. Sorry.
No, go ahead. I bet it's the same one.
No. Do we... I know it's only 13 cents, but just wondering, is that the new minimum wage?
Minimum wage.
That's what I figured. Okay. Just wanted to publicly ask.
I want you to ask the same question. What is the revision to the calendar?
You don't know? My goodness. Lack of communication. As you recall, months ago, we made a decision, the high school administration specifically, to eliminate midterm exams, so the calendar we had approved just prior to that decision had midterm exams and a half-day sessions for high school students on those particular days. So we had to remove that schedule of half-days for...
That would have been like a mandatory? Is that where it was?
Exactly. So the new calendar, which we will post tomorrow, will not show midterm exams, and in addition to that, Mr. Mangili asked me to bump final exams up a day, so that there'd be one less day between the last final exam and graduation. We had three days in there, and the high school folks would prefer just two, so I thought, why not? Let's include that in the change, so asking us to approve that this evening.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Dye?
Yes.
Mr. Mandela?
Aye.
Mrs. Marinelli?
Aye.
And Mr. Sicala.
Yes. Under curriculum... Excuse me. May I have a motion for S... Excuse me. S-24. It's a motion to approve the following for completion of curriculum writing, and those curriculum writing is dealing... That curriculum writing is dealing with K-5 English Language Arts during the 2014-2015 school year at the curriculum rate, and they're set forth in that item. May I have a motion for that item, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Dye?
Yes.
Mr. Mandela?
Aye.
Mrs. Marinelli?
Aye.
And Mr. Sicala.
Yes. Under contracts, may I have a motion for S-25? And S-25 is a motion to approve the contracts, as set forth in that item, for the 2015-2016 school year for special education students, as recommended by the Director of Special Services. May I have a motion for that item, please?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Dye?
Yes.
Mr. Mandela?
Aye.
Mrs. Marinelli?
Aye.
And Mr. Sicala.
Yes. The meeting is open to the public for comments for items on or off the agenda. Seeing none, close that portion of the meeting. We have an announcement of future meetings. Now, did we pick the new date for the July meeting?
We did.
And can you just remind me what we agreed on?
It's going to be Monday, August 3rd.
Okay, so the next meeting of the Board will be Monday, August 3rd. It will be here at the North End Media Center, 7:00 p.m. executive session, 8:00 p.m. regular meeting, and that will be followed by our first meeting in advance of the new school year, August 25th, 2015, at the North End Media Center, 7:00 p.m. executive session, 8:00 p.m. regular meeting. Do we have any final comments? May I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Dye?
Yes.